Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is approval of today's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded and in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the minutes of December 6.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 6, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded and in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now it is approval of claims for payment totaling $120,433.32.
I'll make a motion to approve this claims, this week's claims for payment.
I'll second the motion for the approval of claims for payment.
It's been moved and seconded and in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm at my 10:05 and I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Twister Finisher Farm Endeavor Farms LLC, Section 24 of Eldora Township. I have a list of people that would like to speak is, if there's others, please let me know. Jubers are here, I would like to hear from them, this is, they're close to the vicinity, they're on the list.
And I would prefer to hear from people from Hardin County first, after Mrs. Juber, and then go to others outside the county if there are some.
Now we do have a podium, I'd like you to come up to the podium. We have a speaker up here, that way it can be heard, and announce your name if you could, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, glad to see there are so many people here. When we retired and we bought our house, the nearest confinement was a mile and a half away. The house was all but gutted at the time. And Bob, my husband, and I have spent the last six years repairing it, offering blood, sweat, stitches, surgeries, and tears to put that thing back together. But a year and a half after we bought it, a 2,490 hog confinement was put up just over 1,600 feet from our house. That required no permit. And now they want to double it. Now, this house has historical value to the community and the entire county on many levels. The most recent one, of course, is the Twister movie. Many people across the county and the state see a good deal of importance in that fact. Eldora has named its main park Twister Park. The farm museum used our house as a focal point for their 10th annual tractorade. During RagBri, this community found it important enough to show the movie while the writers were in town and used it as an attraction. There's still a steady flow of tourists who come by. Definitely a steady flow. Not just people from inside the county, but people from other counties and even other states. They come by, they take pictures, there are pictures on the internet that were taken within the last few months. Even Endeavor Farms seems to think that it has some significance because they named their site Twister Finish Farm. Beyond that, this house has 130 years of Hardin County history. When it was built, it was, it had such modern facilities, people from all over the state came to see it. That was in 1886. The architect came from Coldwater, Michigan. There's a block there with houses on it that are almost duplicate to ours. Later on, he did grand hotels in Chicago. This was the first farm in Hardin County to have electricity. And it was used to prove to the local farmers that electricity wouldn't harm their stock. The owner builder of the, of the house was instrumental in making Hardin County one of the first counties in the country to have rural mail delivery. At the turn of the 20th century, when farms in Iowa, when farmers in Iowa were not eligible to get homeowners insurance for their farms from the regular insurance industry, he participated in organizing the Home Mutual Insurance Association of Iowa in this area. Its success and popularity with the farmers was considered at the time to be due to his management. This house is listed at Iowa State University under their Historical Structures Catalog and has been for several years. Even members of the Hardin County Historical Society consider it to be a landmark. And it would appear that it still carries enough importance throughout the state that two television stations have come to do reports on that house in the last few years. I was very intrigued by what was said two weeks ago by the Iowa Select representatives regarding the planning of trees. But it's not Iowa Select by name that is building this confinement. And it would appear that the applicants or the building owners have no intention of doing so according to the matrix since they didn't even take 20 points for it, for item 15 regarding landscaping. Therefore, there is no guarantee that it will ever be done since it is not included in the master matrix. And if they had done so, that would take, require them to take care of the trees planted. If one dies or gets mowed over, they are required to replace it. During a discussion of the nuisance ordinance, the question was asked if this pertains to the confinements. And the answer was no, because they bring a lot of money to the county. The applicants know these confinements do not bring money to the county because in section 39, they took no points for the item economic value to the local community. The applicants also know that there are many, many people in this county that don't want any more confinements because they took no points in section 36, demonstrating community support. They also took no points in 13 or 42 for any emergency plan, no points in 11, 15, or 21 for odor or pollution control, and finally, no points in item 44 regarding groundwater monitoring. Papers my husband has, and we'll, we'll give to you, show that out of the 444, 45 points, the applicants have claimed on the master matrix, they've taken 80 points in error because those items do not even meet the DNR standards. This brings their score down to 365, which is a failing grade. In the last 30 days, two counties have, Humboldt and Webster, have disapproved mass recommendation on three applications for Iowa Select. Many counties have adopted a resolution or written a letter of support, in support of a factory farm moratorium. Ours was one of them. In that resolution, this board said the DNR's master matrix is inadequate and in need of review by everyone possible, from the governor all the way to the general public. You also acknowledged that it is your, your responsibility to represent all taxpayers. Current supervisor, John Beard, from Winneshake County, where a resolution was also passed, recently wrote, "As I speak about our county's resolution, I emphasize the oath of office I took as a supervisor to protect the wealth and public health of the people in our county and that the failings of the master matrix do not allow me to keep that pledge." I am asking you to take the time, review these deductions of 80 points, and do not recommend approval of this application because of those point deductions, because of the, the historical value our house has to the community, and simply because a growing number of people in, in this county don't want anymore. Thank you.
You say you do have a copy of those points that he pointed out?
He does.
Okay. Next, I have Kurt from Economics and Tourism. Bob, I'm sorry.
On our house, when I retired and moved out there to fix that place up, I really went full to it. And everything was just wonderful. And the closest pig barn was a mile and a half away. I hadn't realized the impact of when one gets closer and all of a sudden they built one, which I found rather interesting getting involved in these confinements. Like the guy who owned the pasture, the field next to me, came over and was very concerned when we wanted to make our windbreak bigger to put up some trees. He was very worried about me growing sweet corn. Then he actually came over and talked to me, which means he knows we lived there. Yet later on, checking out about the confinement that was built, it didn't need a permit, but it needed the, I'm sorry, I get messed up with some of the words here, for where they're going to spread their manure, said we never lived there. I just can't understand how come they cannot tell the truth about stuff they're doing. You have to live to smell. As far as us, I not only represent myself, but everybody else that has a confinement next to their home. That's ridiculous. Pine Lake gets a pig barn approved, how can that happen? It's right by a state park. It's just not right. There's a leak by that confinement by our place. Some say it's just runoff, not. I can't understand after this many years of asking for it, nobody will go out there and really test it to see if it leaks or not. Is it really from the confinement or is it from the field? The question is, when we had that drought and all these lines all dried up and everything, that one still has water. Well, I say water, it has a liquid coming out. They also don't mow the place very good. We've had to call and complain about it not being mowed. Tons of thistles there. But I got wise in finding out about these confinements. When all of a sudden this place started looking good, they started mowing it, act like they did in originally. Let's yell there's something out. Next thing, a guy comes over to my house and wants to measure how far the pig confinement is. Well, knew the reason why it was cleaned up. They've kept it clean ever since. Except for their spot, they still that water drain. And I can't believe when we talked to DNR and everybody else, we were even told to go test it ourselves, trespass on their property. That's not an answer somebody should be telling us. If it's been this long, somebody should have checked it. And still today has not been checked, other than, I believe, a person came out there and said it didn't smell bad, so there's nothing wrong. I just want it with everybody that has to have pig barns around them, by public parks, whatever. It's not right for them. Put them out where they can't be so close to a house, don't like it. And also, there was a statement brought up to me, well, you shouldn't move to Iowa pig barns with confinements. Well, I don't really think that's the right answer to say. It's how about us control them like we're supposed to? And as far as the manure, if you live out in the country, yeah, it's a thing you're going to know, they're going to spread it and it's going to smell. And I think almost everybody can live with that. But that's when you spread it. And I didn't realize it till last year, every time they take the pigs out of the pole barn, our house just becomes black with flies. That's just ridiculous. You know, we do have a constitutional right. And the worst part of it is, these people don't even live in this county. They live in a community, they live in another town. They don't put up with it. And I'll tell you one thing, you'd never see them out there, is when it smells. They don't do it. That's just what I'd like, I'd like to know it's for everybody, it's not just for us. It's for anybody around the house, parks, anyplace like that, when they all know it's wrong. And I believe I did too here, one more thing I wanted to say. They stink when you drive by. Well, guess what? Our house doesn't drive, it stays right there. So it's not just pass by and wind your windows up and turn your air conditioner on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is Kurt with Economics and Tourism. He was on the list to speak.
He's not here yet.
I was calling for Kurt.
Kurt Lambertson?
I believe so.
Yeah. He's tied up today.
Steve, I got you on here too, so.
Okay. Well, if Kurt was here, he'd be able to tell you about the, and he may, he may show up here at the last second. But I'm Steve Throssel and a former owner of Wink Products Company. We sold our company a week ago, a week and, three days ago. Yes, I'm Steve Throssel and I was former owner of Wink Products Company and we sold it about 10 days ago to a larger company out of Vernon Hills, Illinois called Rustoleum. And after a four-year search for a company that would make more than a three-year commitment to staying in Eldora, I was able to find a company, another rust company that would buy our company, add production, add people, and grow in this community. And I have that commitment from them and I have that faith and belief that they will follow through on it because they are trying to get into the same markets we were in. So economic development is going to happen in Eldora, but it's very difficult. And if you look at the downtown, no, no farmer or, or anyone wants to see the downtown of Eldora looked the way it does. So we need, we've been putting a lot of money and a lot of emphasis, we've been putting a lot of money and a lot of emphasis into the bike trail, into the parks, the county conservation board, Hawkins Campus, various things that we would call countywide treasures, like the farm museum and the museums up in Ackley, the Ostefriesen and the Steamboat Rock Museum and Tower Rock with the new cabins. Just a lot of stuff going on with the bike trail. Steamboat Rock's actually seeing an economic boom right now with the opening of the, the bar, the happening, and then more revenue coming into the rock stop. And then there's a gentleman from out of state or out of town anyway that's buying up properties and, and cleaning them up. And it looks like Steamboat Rock's going to benefit from tourism. Eldora doesn't, we aren't seeing it just yet, but it's, it's coming to Eldora when we get the trails completed. I just want to say this about some of the things I know about the master matrix, because I was involved with that with the Iowa Environmental Council when it went together with Susan Heathcote. And essentially Chuck Gipp, the director of the DNR, does have the ability to, to put the kibosh on, on any side. It's the director's discretion is written into the master matrix. Now, they've never done that because of political reasons, but that is a hammer that can be used and they should be using it to, because they always blame the legislature who controls their budget. So the director absolutely needs to use that, that hammer on the legislature to force, you know, clean water legislation, knock loose that 3/8 of a cent sales tax increase that was approved but not funded. For two years now, we've been waiting for funding, it's been approved by 63% of the citizens of Iowa. So there's a lot in the master matrix that can be done, yeah, to, to make it a, you know, a usable item. But there's some stuff in there that's not being used and we need to get that political will to do it. I'm also writing a novel at this point and my agent is Beverly Swirling. And I would recommend that you guys read her book, she's written eight of them. She's done a trilogy on the history of Manhattan and New York. And she's a world-renowned author and as well as an agent, literary agent. And I just sent her a picture of the Twister house because I thought it was a cool, neat old house that would show her kind of Victorian-style era that we have in this area. And she wrote back to me and said, "That's a real gem." You know, "That's something that's really worth having in your community." And so, again, just to reinforce the Jubers, they are sitting on a gem. And the county has that as one of their treasures and we need to protect that. But the game playing is really what I don't like to see. And there's a lot of things that go on with manure runoff. That basically it's a nutrient situation. And we create, basically, if you use the analogy of a firecracker or gunpowder, the nutrient is the gunpowder, okay? It's inert until you, until a match sets it off. The match can be as simple as a baby's diaper, like at Pine Lake at the beach, or it can be the geese at Pine Lake, or it can be cattle, free-roaming cattle on the river, the Iowa River. You hear a lot about cattle causing the problem. Cattle aren't really causing the problem, they, they trigger the explosion of, of growth, of bacteria. But it's really the, the overabundance of nutrient that creates the situation, that creates a volatile substance. And then finally, before I, before I leave the podium, I think that given the investment that we've made in tourism and bringing people into the community and, and bike trails and so on, these are millions and millions of dollars worth of infrastructure that we're putting at risk for people who fail to get approval in other counties and come back, just like an old fishing guide to their favorite fishing hole because they know that they're going to catch fish here. So Jeff Hanson goes over here, gets turned down, goes over here, gets turned down, comes back to Hardin County and pushes these people around, you know? And he knows he's, he can get away with it because he's gotten away with it before. So we have to stand up for what we believe in. And when, bad things happen when good people do nothing. And that's really all I have to say. But we're, we're, we're just about, I mean, the Pine Creek watershed is, is over capacity right now. And there are some good cover crops and good things happening, but that nutrient mix is just too, too rich and too plentiful for us to deal with. And we're going to have to find new ways to deal with it. So we can't keep up with them. So we, I'm not normally for moratoriums. I mean, I can't remember a moratorium I've ever been in favor of. But this time I am because we don't have the infrastructure to control it. And if we had the infrastructure to control it, regulate it, monitor it, and do it right so it doesn't overwhelm us, then, then I would, I would say we don't need a moratorium. But in this instance, I think we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Havens, you're next on my list. There you are.
Looks like hog confinement brought a lot of terrors and tail doors. Here's a no-till document.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure. There's a reducing nutrient loss document. There's a section, excuse me, about four or five sections on the Iowa administrative code. And I put a little mark beside the sections that I'm going to be talking about. And since there's a lot of numbers here, here's my presentation.
Good. Thank you.
You can follow along and hopefully I'll stick to it. First of all, I'm not trying to fool anybody with a lot of numbers, with a lot of IAC things. I presented both sides in this. And I want you to be aware that I have comments about both sides. But I'm not trying to fool anybody about anything. If anybody has any questions afterwards, we can certainly go over it. And, and I just want to make sure that you understand that I'm, I'm just not trying to hoodwink anybody here.
Go ahead and state your name, that way it's on the speaker.
Bob Havens.
Is there some reason that there's not a speaker available so that we can actually hear it in this room?
This room is not wired with a sound system, so I don't have a speaker.
There is an, there is an empty seat up front here if you'd like to move up front.
Thank you very much.
I, I will try to speak up. Okay, excess phosphorus from field runoff has impaired Hardin County lakes and streams. The amount of phosphorus in the manure incorporated in the soil is called the phosphorus application rate. The crop removal rate is how much phosphorus is removed with the harvest. The remaining phosphorus will leave the field or build up in the soil. The phosphorus will leave the field through soil erosion or dissolved in water as runoff or through tile lines. No-till practices, buffer strips, and grassy waterways help to keep soil on the field. Algae became a problem in Lake Erie due to phosphorus from field runoff. No-till buffer strips and grass waterways were used to keep the phosphorus, which is attached to the soil, from entering the lake. Lake water phosphorus levels declined and it looked like the battle was won. Several years later, high phosphorus levels in the lake returned. What's going on? As concentrations of phosphorus built up in the soil, water filtering through the buffer strips and waterways had an easier time dissolving the phosphorus, carrying it to the lake. And even though much of the sediment was trapped, any leaving the field will have a higher concentration of phosphorus. So what's the answer? Whether commercial or manure fertilizer, follow Iowa State University PM publication PM 1688 or the nutrient reduction strategy SP 435 for the application of phosphorus. This will keep soil phosphorus levels in line with crops' need and will reduce phosphorus leaving the field through erosion, runoff, and tile lines. Let's look at the numbers for these fields. Soil phosphorus concentrations average 35 ppm. ISU publication PM 1688 recommends no phosphorus be applied to these fields until soil phosphorus levels drop into the optimum range. The manure management plan shows phosphorus application rate of 138 pounds of phosphorus per acre and a crop removal rate of 58 pounds per acre. An excess of 80 pounds per acre. So even though ISU recommends zero phosphorus on these fields, over two times the crop removal rate is being applied. And to add insult to injury, application of over 100 pounds of phosphorus per acre is never recommended. This is 138 pounds they're putting on there per acre. Let's look at the fields the manure is being applied on. The average slopes for three of these fields are 4%. The remaining four have an average slope of 7%. Those familiar with the hill going west on a steamboat rock is a 6% grade. That's a pretty steep hill. Gross erosion for these fields comes to over 2 million pounds sediment per year. That's 75 to 100 dump truck loads. Even with an SDR of .42, that's a lot of dirt. There are no buffer strips or barriers, there are no diversion terraces or sediment basins, there is no subsurface drainage for any of these fields. Could a worse field be found to put manure on? Bear Creek will get the brunt of this. The P-index calculation is to provide a number associated with the risk that it will cause excess algae growth in our lakes and streams. The average acre result for these fields is 1.47. This risk is higher than the risk for Upper Pine Lake at 1.43, which we all know has a problem with excess algae growth due to excess phosphorus. Folks, I've looked at this from many angles. The problem is clear. Phosphorus levels in the soil around these hog confinement operations are way too high, many times higher than levels needed to grow corn and soybeans. The solution is clear. Stop putting more phosphorus on the soil than the crop needs. Spread the manure over a larger area to prevent soil phosphorus buildup. Apply phosphorus, whether manure or commercial fertilizer, in line with Iowa State University publication PM 1688. One more item. Separation distances. IAC 459 and, and 567 are about hair quality. They are not about squeezing an animal feeding operation into a convenient location. It's about minimizing the impact on a family's home. And that's the crux of this matter. And that's the crux of this matter. At Bob and Donna's place, there's an existing hog operation to the north with just under 2,500 pigs. At a distance of 1,650 feet, the facility meets the required separation distance today. The CAFO owner is going to expand the facility to 5,000 pigs by adding another building of the same size just to the north of the first building. IAC 459.201 deems this as a single animal feeding operation after expansion. The required separation distance of 1,875 feet, called out in IAC 459.202, is not met by measuring from home foundation to animal feeding operation structure. The grandfather clause does not apply since the operation size classification has been crossed and the existing structure was built under the current separation distance rules. IAC 567 says, "For purposes of the air quality-related separation distances in Iowa Code Section 459.202 and 459.201, provides that two or more animal feeding operations under common ownership or management are deemed to be a single animal feeding operation if they are adjacent." IAC 459.102 says, "A confinement feeding operation structure means an animal feeding operation structure that is part of a confinement feeding operation." IAC 459.202 says, "The following table represents the minimum separation distance between a confinement feeding operation structure and a residence." The minimum separation distance does not mean to the other side of the structure. It does not mean a structure further away. It means the minimum distance to a structure in the, in the animal feeding operation, as IAC 259.102 states. The existing structure is a confinement animal feeding operation structure. The instructions for filling out the permit form, not Iowa Code, measures from the residence and goes to the new building as if the existing animal feeding operation structure, called out in IAC 459.202, did not exist. IAC 459.203 states that confinement feeding operation may be expanded if any of the following applies. Any construction or expansion of a confinement feeding operation structure complies with the distance requirements applying to that structure as provided in Section 459.202. Tell me there is no master plan with every non-permitted hog confinement building. Folks, beware. This is contrary to IAC 567, 459.102, 459.201, 459.202, and makes no sense. So let's test it to see if it does make sense. If both these buildings were built at the same time, the construction would not be allowed because this would be less than 1,875 feet. If the building furthest away from the Jubers' home was built first, and then the building closest were built next, this would not be allowed because this would be less than 1,875 feet. But in this case, if the closest building were built first, wait a few years, then they are saying it's okay to build the second building because the second building is further than 1,875 feet. The first two examples are not allowed, but the last one is, even though the results are exactly the same. It doesn't test. Taking this further, out at Jubers' house, a new building can be added every year with no limit because as more buildings are built, the distance of the new building can always exceed the separation distance requirement, even though the Jubers' residence remains under that limit with every building expansion. Do you honestly believe IAC 459 and 567 are about expanding a facility, building by building, without bounds? I've looked at this. They can put 10 buildings down. The separation distance laws are about air quality, minimizing the impact on family's homes. As more buildings are built, the smell, flies, and noise increase, but this expansion is blind to that. We have a distortion of the separation distance law because the focus is on erecting more buildings and fails to consider existing structures within the animal feeding operation. Based on study, reason, and common sense, I ask the Hardin County Board of Supervisors to not approve this application. This will put a focus on getting these loopholes fixed and not perpetuate this injustice. Finally, family farmer? Not in my book. Stewards of the land? You be the judge. Iowa nice? Well, it's not even close. Giving the family farmer a bad name? That's how I see it. This industry with sheer disregard for others will eventually bring regulations down on the family farmer that will rip this state.
Nick, you want to go ahead and state your name?
Uh, Nick Schute, Alden. Hello, my name is Nick Schute from Alden. I'm a third-generation farmer, a taxpayer of Hardin County, and a proud CCI member. BJ, I'm a proud CCI member. I belong to that group that you said that you're embarrassed to know of on Labor Day in Des Moines. When confronted on the issue, you took down your post. I can't believe a man of your stature and your position would make such a public comment of that sort, but you did. But I'm very happy to say, I'm glad to see the Hardin County Board of Supervisors are televising this hearing so that the people who couldn't attend today can view on social media on how our local government, right here in Hardin County, works. I believe it's a tool in how your constituents can educate themselves on how you voted on an issue, how they can vote in the next supervisors' elections. Anyways, Hardin County Supervisors passed a resolution, 2017-19, which is extremely weak, that says, "Hardin County Supervisors acknowledge that it's our responsibility to represent all taxpayers in regards to personal health, well-being, the environment, stewardship, and ability to recreate, create healthy social events, maintain taxpayer infrastructure, and good farmer, good farm neighbors while being a strong link in feeding the world." Lance, it doesn't say anything about representing Farm Bureau, or the Hardin County pork producers, or in this case, Iowa Select Farms. This resolution was created by you, Lance, BJ, and Renee. You have the power to deny this application on the grounds of what you stated above and on the grounds of inadequate separation distances, like Bob just stated, as this is an expansion of an existing CAFO. Like I said, you have the power to deny this, just like Humboldt County, who also denied Iowa Select site a few weeks ago, along with Webster County, who denied two of their sites. So you guys do have the power to deny this. So yes, it can be done. And so can reviewing weekly supervisors' meeting on social media if we need to in order to elect supervisors who will represent their constituents. Everyone that's against us, please stand up.
I guess what?
And we have several in the hall. We do have a politician here today who does represent the people, and hopefully he'll hear from him later, and Senator Johnson. Thank you.
What?
I know you're here.
Yeah.
Okay. We have Christine on the list.
I'm just going down the line.
Okay. Hi, I'm Julie Dunn. I'm from Eldora. And I, I do have petitions opposing factory farms in Hardin County. I'm going to present those to you now, Lance. Thank you. I don't want to take a lot of time. I just really appreciate everyone who has shown up. One thing that's important to me as a Hardin County resident and Eldora resident is the quality of our water. We need to, we need to improve our quality, our water quality here. That's what brought me here in the first place. The rash and stuff from the lake and the times that I couldn't use it because of poor water quality. Just a few weeks ago, you couldn't go outside your back door without needing a wall of the smell of hog feces and hog manure, poop and urine, and it's lasted for weeks. People are tired of it. Sorry, I'm getting a little angry there. I do, and there seems to be growing push by the Iowa Legislature and, and Big Egg pushing public policy to restrict the citizen's ability and access to courts, to stand up for their own property, protect their own property from these incursions. When someone, when Iowa Select, when Jeff Hanson can come and bring these in, he does not live in this county. The money does not stay in this county. And who builds these things? A company owned by him or a family member? The money does not stay here. It goes down to West Des Moines or wherever it is. It doesn't stay here if you look on that application. I don't think any points are taken for economic advantage to the community. That being said, in talking about property values, there is a decrease in property value of 40% within half a mile, 30% within one mile, 20% within one and a half miles, and 10% property loss within two miles. So all these towns, all these homes out in rural Hardin County, it's going to be harder to sell them. People who have invested their whole lifetime in their home will not be able to sell it. If they can sell it at all, they won't get what they've put into it. This is a quality of life issue, and we need to, we need to remember that. We're citizens. Yeah, who do you want to be your neighbor? Won't you be my neighbor? I do not want Iowa Select to be my neighbor. I just want to say one more thing about livestock farming. When you're growing corn and soybeans for feed, 30% of the calories, 53% of the protein of stuff grown here is grown to feed farm animals. Two-thirds of those calories and protein are lost in conversion from plant to animal protein. So one gram of protein from beans or peas or plant-based foods is produced 100% more efficiently than one gram of protein from animals, and you need to keep that in mind. We have, our soil here is precious. We need to use it to help feed the world. We need to grow things that people can afford to eat, and we need to do it wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on my list was Senator Johnson. Is he here? Good morning. Go ahead and state your name. We'll get up here.
Okay. Good morning. I'm State Senator David Johnson from Senate District 1 in northwest Iowa. I represent Lyon, Osceola, Dickinson Clay, and Palo Alto Counties. I am the last legislator at the Capitol currently who helped write this law that you're faced with, dealing with, and I feel it's a responsibility of mine to try to make this a little bit better. But we're not going to do that here. I'm not here to ask you to change any laws or rules or anything. I'm asking you to, to meet the challenge that's here with what I understand with this site. First of all, I do want to mention that you have a wonderful website, and I just want to mention that. I don't know where the auditor is, but it's, it's, it's a great website to work on. So I came over here today to just make a few comments here.
Our IT has a lot to do with the website.
Oh?
The IT department has a lot to do with the website.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's very good. Very good. I really liked it. I've been traveling the state the last couple of years during the interim because I understood that there are some major issues going on across the state with the citing of, of CAFOs. I am not here to bash agriculture. I, I was raised in an agribusiness family. We owned a full-service agribusiness farm supply operation in eastern Iowa, the 80s. We're not kind to operations like that, and so we exited that. I just spent up until a couple of years ago, 15 years, working as a dairy herdsman. And please appreciate the work that dairy farmers do because it is hard work. So I'm not here to be anti-agriculture at all. I spent eight years either serving as the Senate Agriculture Chair, the co-chair when we were tied in the Senate, 25 to 25, and when I was the ranking member, when I was in the minority. I don't think that there's any question that we're seeing a sharp increase in CAFOs around the state. We've got one major pork plant in Sioux City has begun slaughtering hogs, and we have the, another one in nearby Wright County that seems to be spurring a lot of construction right now, plus with the aging of the buildings. And that's raising some new issues. You, as county supervisors, do have authority under the master matrix and under our rules to take extra steps in order to make sure that CAFOs are being properly cited. My issue is the proper citing of these today. You have the authority to take points off your, the master matrix. If you feel that the matrix that was scored, is it properly scored? You have the authority to do that if you disagree with that. You have the authority to recommend that the Department of Natural Resources deny the If you don't ask them to deny, or if you don't deny the application, the DNR will automatically rubber stamp the application, and there's no further review of it, and on it goes. It's a done deal. You have the authority to make a statement by denying the application for any reason other than the master matrix will, and that won't be applicable to DNR though. So I would... So I would suggest that you carefully consider denying this application for some of the reasons stated here today. I believe, I'll show you a photograph from Lyon County, which like Hardin County, is in the top 10 in the country, in the counties with the most hogs and pigs, okay? So just to give you an idea, this is what Mr. Havens was referring to. It's hard to really show this, but I'm doing the best I can. He's talking about row upon, or I mean building here, go ahead and pass it down. Building upon building upon building, all the way down. Look at the far right. You didn't take a good enough look at that because it's a house. There's a house there on the far right. When those buildings went in, that was an acreage. It was already existing there. And because these buildings were on the, there were eight buildings on the west, which is your prevailing wind, and two more on the east side of that house, the owner was forced to sell. And now there are people who work in the hog buildings and the hog parts are living in that house. It was bought by the operator. That's not really Iowa nice, I don't think. But this is what you can do. You can just set them up, row upon row upon row. I see this as definitely a separation distance issue. I see this definitely as being one building. When one goes up after another, I think that if you look at Chapter 459, 201, I know that Mr. Havens has done his homework. He certainly helped me understand some things about some of the science involved there. But we did not, when we wrote the separation distance law, we did not intend for situations like this to happen. This wasn't the way it was. Remember the history of this law? We first addressed it in 1995. That's three years before I was elected. And that was done by a group of Republican House members, put together what was called House File 519. One of those was Russ Teig. I don't know if you know Russ. He's a farmer over in the Jewel area. I replaced him on this group of 12, this bipartisan group of 12 that met during the 2002 session at night, as often as we could until we hammered this thing out. Six Democrats, six Republicans, six from the House, six from the Senate. And Representative Teig unfortunately suffered a stroke early on in that process, and I replaced him and brought that to a close. So I don't think that there's any question that you measure from the first building, which of course is under 500 animal units, meaning it could be put right next to your house, because there are no separation distances for anything under 500 animal units. We need to get some of these issues clarified and they need to be challenged, in my opinion. Like I said, this is no time to be sloppy, but I will tell you that Iowa Select was sloppy in my district. They came into Clay County, had a site picked, did not bother because they're not required to. They can get points for it. It should be mandatory, but it's not. But they could choose, any pork producer can choose that you notify your neighbors within one mile. Well, they didn't. They didn't. And they had to change their plans and it cost themselves a lot of money and caused the neighborhood a lot of angst. Because had they done that, well, they would have found that they were 5,000 feet away from a federally licensed rare raptor breeder. And these are, these are birds that are highly prized by the Saudis. He gets international build, a business with these falcons that are worth in five figures. Had they bothered to even talk to the neighbors, they could have saved themselves a lot of angst and a lot of pain for other people. This is no time to get sloppy. I'm not talking about you, the board of supervisors. I'm talking about what's happening out there with some of these applications that come in. When we get sloppy, we make mistakes. Finally, I want to give you an example of where we are in the citing of hog confinements. What do you see there, Mr. Teig?
Looks like it's sitting down in a pit with a waterway running out of it.
That is, it's a, it's a, it's a large hog confinement in the middle of a waterway in Al Mecque County, on top of karst topography. And the owner of this operation, he happens to be in the top 25 producers in the nation. He lives two counties away. This is in a watershed. It's right above two naturally reproducing trout streams that bring millions of dollars into northeast Iowa. Chuck Gipp, the director of the DNR, said, "He can't stop this. He cannot stop this." So there's bad actors out there that are getting away with this, and it's legal, but is it right? And that's some of the challenges that we're going to be facing in this state as we move forward and we see more pork production in this state. And Director Gipp said, "If they could build it here, they can build it anywhere." So I would, I would strongly suggest that you consider denying this application, that you, you say that you consider this as one building, one structure with the addition of that, and it's violating the separation distances for the private residents that is in the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you some questions?
Yes, yes, sure.
Is the, are you planning to address this in the legislature this year?
Yes.
And how many, how many county supervisors or how many boards of supervisors have actually sent denials to the DNR and the DNR denies the application?
The DNR does 2%.
2%.
They're rubber stamped.
Even if, even if the, no, I'm talking, if the board is...
I don't have that figure.
But if the board of supervisors denies it...
Right.
And sends it on.
Yeah. And if there's a disagreement there, you have the right to go to the Environmental Protection Commission and appeal it there. And they will follow the law as they see it. They will follow the law.
Yes. I believe so. And I also attended a meeting, and I'm sorry I don't remember that it was Chuck Gipp, but another, one of the top representatives from the DNR was there and said that he was told in the beginning by the Attorney General's office, or the Attorney General for Iowa, that if they denied one, or yes, if they denied, denied them and they fell within the laws or whatever, I mean, even if we disapprove them, that the Attorney General's office would not stand behind the DNR in any lawsuit.
That's what I believe is correct, which is unfortunate.
So, exactly. So this is a, this is a thing that's controlled at one of Iowa's top levels. And I don't know what's easier to address. The laws, because obviously it hasn't been able to be changed. Or administrative rules. Some of these that, that Mr. Havens addressed are administrative rules, the way I understand it. And why can't some of those things be clarified in administrative rules? I don't, I'm just asking because I'm not that knowledgeable on that process.
I would say because the Administrative Rules Committee is stacked. Do I have to say any more than that?
No.
And the other thing is, I don't know that it's at the highest levels. I would suggest that anybody interested in this, follow the money. Or major, including Iowa Select's owner is a major contributor to campaigns, including your resident senator here. You would be shocked by the amount of money that has flowed into his campaign chest. But it's there, it's all part of public record. And that's really what's, what's driving this. It isn't for the benefit of all Iowans by any means. And we're just going to see more of these built, and they're going to be built where they aren't. Where the, you know, and that's what I'm seeing all around the state. I was in Fremont County, because a small town in Farragut, 450 people, heard that an out-of-state investor, I'll call him an investor because he had a lot of cash on hand for various reasons, from Kansas, went into the county, bought up a bunch of parcels of land, and the watershed there goes uphill out of Farragut, and he was going to put a whole series of confinements up there. They have no nitrates and they're shallow wells or very, or just almost imperceptible levels of nitrates. And the poor town was just frightened and they wanted somebody to talk to. I drove all the way down there. I live in Ochid, next to Lake Okoboji. But that's because I think I have a responsibility to let people know that they need some power. And people need local power. They need more local power. It's not going to hurt anybody. You know? Some of these same arguments that were made in 1995 are getting a little old. They're getting a little old. It's not going to hurt. I am a recovering local control denier. I helped write this law. Does everybody get that? Okay? Do you have any other questions?
No, that's, that's it.
Yeah. I would like to, I'll be waiting outside here. Anyway, I'd like to pass this around because I think people here ought to see this. The gentleman who's building that, his picture was on the cover of Successful Farming Magazine.
Senator, before you step down, a clarification. You said Chuck Gipp said he can't stop it?
No.
I think he said won't stop it because, if I remember correctly, at least submitted the IC, your group asked for our input on the master matrix. I thought when we put it to bed, it had a discretion of the director.
We did.
In fact, Scottish.
We did. But when this case came up, the Attorney General said, "You can't stop this. You can't use, the director discretion really doesn't exist."
Right.
At least that's Director Gipp's interpretation, along with what he was told by the Attorney General.
I got a 30-day shut down. I was waiting for half a cup of light oil, and we couldn't identify the DNR.
Yeah, yeah.
Your 30-day shut down.
Well, it's a pleasure. Got a beautiful courthouse here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Since my name was Megan, would I just make a quick note? Renee, by denying this application at the county level, it doesn't mean that it denies the CAFOs. It means that it triggers the DNR to take a closer look at everything.
Okay.
Next I have is Amy. Hawes? There you go. Or Gray, I'm sorry.
Hi, everybody. I'm Amy Gray. I'm a long-term Hardin County resident. I've lived here for 40-plus years. I have watched Eldora and the county go from being a tourist attraction, Pine Lake, to being a place to be avoided. The lake especially bothers me. That is one of our, used to be one of our biggest sources of revenue. You can't even go in the water the majority of the time. You're advised to not let your children in there, your pets. Don't touch the water. You certainly wouldn't want to eat the fish, and it's so polluted. I live within a half a mile of three CAFOs myself. We worked a long time to afford enough money to move into the country. And they were there when we moved there, I will freely admit, but there is nothing to stop, apparently, anyone from building more closer around us. We live close to a fork of the Iowa River. It's, it's a very lovely place to live, except for the smell, which we do have on a regular basis. I think you guys have been given the tools today to do the right thing. I think you know what the right thing is. I'm asking you, as is everyone, most of the people in this room, to resist the, to resist the master, master matrix, reject it. Hopefully the DNR will take a closer look at this. We need to do the right thing, not just for me, not just for you, for everybody's children, our grandchildren, and for the future. Our, our choices here are affecting the rest of the country, even now as we speak. The water runoff from Iowa and Hardin County is polluting the rest of the world, and we need, we need to do something about it. Everybody needs to speak up. We can't be complacent and apathetic anymore. It's too late. That's why we're where we're at right now. So again, I'm asking you guys, reject the master matrix, do the right thing. You've been given the tools. Everybody's watching you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have on the list is Marion Cooper.
Hi, I'm Marion Cooper. I don't have any additional facts or figures to add to this discussion, but I will say that I've been on the same side as the speakers who have been speaking for more than 20 years now, probably closer to 25. And it's, it's really getting frustrating. I do sense a growing sentiment, and I want to say, I guess I should say first, that I married into a farm family. And I tell people, kind of tongue-in-cheek, that my education really began, even though I've got a bachelor's degree in additional schooling beyond that, education began when I became a farmer. So I have a lot of respect for farmers and the decisions that they have to make. I have a lot of, of respect and fear actually for the way farming and agriculture is structured today in this country. And I don't think it's a good thing. I think that it's not sustainable. I think the problems with water, the problems with soil erosion point to that. Some of us were at a meeting of a pretty high-up agricultural scientist from the USDA, based in Ames, a couple of weeks ago, at Cawkins Campus, where he said that we're on track now to not be able to farm here in Iowa in, by the year 2100, given the rate of soil erosion that's happening. So that's something, that suggests that there's something really wrong with the way we're farming now. So that's a much larger problem. This is just a sliver of that problem. But I'd like to reemphasize that you guys are in a position to say no to this particular CAFO expansion. I think the majority of Iowans, if we're not there yet, I think we're moving in that direction, that we would like to see a moratorium happen on CAFO building, new building, expansion. We feel like we've got enough of these. I think a number of years ago, the Hardin County supervisors at that time wrote a letter to the DNR suggesting that Hardin County was already saturated with CAFOs at that time, and now we have more. So I think we've exceeded that saturation point. You know, what this really is, is, and I appreciate the economic arguments of people in farming. I mean, it makes, you go, if you want to get started in farming and you go to your banker and the banker says, you know, "You just need to put up a CAFO and get some revenue coming in. That way you'll be able to, you know, pay me my mortgage," you know, whatever. You know, it's, it's set up that way. We have to stop that cycle at some point because it's not sustainable and we're hurting ourselves if we don't stop it. So you guys have the power, I think, to put, to begin to put the brakes on it. And I would suggest to you that the majority of people, in my estimation, I don't have numbers, probably would back you. They certainly are going to be watching you. So again, please do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have is Keith Cooper.
I'll keep my comments fairly brief. My name is Keith Cooper, lifelong resident, although I did live away from here for 20 years, moved back here to take over the family farm. I've worked for Fortune 500 companies. Then I had my own brokerage business for 30 years, working primarily with agricultural clients. I would just like to say that we have a right to the pursuit of happiness. And nobody's desire for economic gain has, has the ability to foreclose on the hopes and dreams of people who have invested their blood, sweat and tears in a residence in rural Iowa. And that's what's happening all over. I walk outside of my place at night and the closest CAFO I have is about a mile away. And there are times when it's almost unbearable. That's a mile away. So you're saying it's okay for these people to put up with that? It's wrong. It's not... It's not right. It's absolutely wrong. And I know that you'll try to pass a buck on to a higher governmental body, but I think there have been arguments presented here today that show that you've got reasonable reason to reject this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristy Harris.
Hi, I'm from Hardin County also, and basically, I am reading a letter for someone who could not be here this morning. It's from Gene Tinker. He's the former Iowa Department of Natural Resources Animal Feeding Operations Coordinator. And he would have liked to have come, but he sent this letter to be read for him. So I'll do my best to make it, you know. Anyway, it titles the letter, "Iowa Counties and the Master Matrix." Iowa law allows counties to participate in construction permitting of some proposed confinement operations. The degree to which a county is involved is up to the county. Some counties may determine the state's minimum construction requirements are adequate, and will choose not to participate in the master matrix process. Those counties would do so by electing to not adopt a CER, which is a construction evaluation resolution each year. In other words, you just wash your hands of it. Other counties may determine that additional requirements beyond the state's minimum standards are needed, but don't have the time or the desire to participate actively in the permitting process. These counties could do so by adopting a CER, which is a construction evaluation resolution each year, and then accepting a passing score on all master matrix applications that are submitted. Such a process requires applicants to develop and submit a master matrix with a construction permit application, and then will be required to follow the master matrix requirements that are made conditions of the construction permit. The DNR may ask the applicant for clarification of master matrix items for inclusion in that construction permit, but they are not allowed to evaluate the appropriateness of the master matrix items since the county adopted a passing score. Although, next is the other option. Some counties may choose to be very involved in the construction permitting process, knowing they must commit time to any applications received. Those counties start the process each year by adopting a CER, which is that construction evaluation resolution. You start there. These counties may request applicants to involve the county in development of the master matrix application. Although counties can't require applicants to allow the county to be involved in the development, such collaboration could promote mutual understanding of the project and the process. When the application is submitted, the county will evaluate the master matrix submitted and determine if the master matrix application includes appropriate item selection, and if a passing score is achieved. If the county determines a passing score is achieved, the DNR will accept the application as submitted. If the county determines a passing score has not been achieved, the DNR will conduct an independent review of the master matrix to decide if a passing score has been achieved. So those are some of the tools that we're, they've been talking about here. Counties may determine they would like to see certain master matrix items selected in development of an application. If so, it would be appropriate for the counties to make that known to all potential applicants so they can develop applications accordingly. Communication between and amongst applicants, counties, and DNR assists all involved in the permitting process. And that was from Gene Tinker again. He was, I guess, for 14 years, the Animal Feeding Operations Coordinator until just this last summer. So that was his letter.
Could I get a copy of that, please?
Yes, I would have to make copies.
So you don't need, okay.
My name is Brenda Brink. I live just near Huxley, and full disclosure, I am running for House District 49, which includes Eldora and southern part of Hardin County. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak, since I'm not a resident. I think that what Senator Johnson was talking about, I can name exactly, and that is that Deb and Jeff Hanson, who own Iowa Select, have contributed in 2016 $65,000. Think about that for a minute. I don't have $65,000. I wasn't planning on raising $65,000 through the Friends of Dix PAC. So that Hanson family is able to funnel that money through that PAC for Senator Dix, and what do you think they expect to get out of it? Well, we know what they expect to get out of it. Unfortunately, it means that we are less healthy. Now, that's a lot of money, but what is our health worth? I've been in front of the board here before, talking about the increased risk of childhood asthma, hydrogen sulfide, ammonia. You go on, and you can see maps, and those maps showing those clouds of toxic gases. When's the last time you accidentally got a whiff of ammonia? Why, why is it that we don't realize how toxic they are? Don't you think our bodies should be able to tell us? It's because, it's just like, I'm a dietitian by trade. I'm an educator by trade. And when we had people who had to be fed through a tube, they never got anything by mouth, for various reasons, stroke, whatever. They had to be fed through a tube, usually inserted in their stomach. After a while, they didn't taste anything anyway. If they were enabled eventually to go back so they could take food by mouth, they didn't have any taste buds left. And that's what's happening to people who are exposed to these toxic gases. Pretty soon, they don't have the sensors in their body anymore to give them that danger signal. Now, that's kind of scary, isn't it? That the clouds have gotten that thick, that people who work, especially those very closely, next to the production of those gases in hog confinements, are not even getting those signals from their body anymore. What is our health worth? What is our children's health worth? The evidence is very clear. So I would say that even beyond the amount of money that is being thrown to keep things status quo, that we start looking at what we can do to make a change. Because the health of this community is only as good as the health of our children and ourselves.
Next I have is Judy Niemeyer.
I've lived in Eldora my entire life, and I just think that this really needs to come to an end. I mean, we're based on tourism around here. We've lost everything else. Our industries and everything else are going bye-bye. We need at least to have that left. And with the smells, and the pollution, and everything that's coming along with all these hog confinements, we're just kissing everything goodbye. And something needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Staples.
My name is Judy Staples. Wasn't sure I was going to be on the list, so. I have lived, I was born and raised in Hardin County, left for a while, came back, raised our two daughters, and we live over by Reese Park. And in proximity, yeah, Reese Park is by New Providence, for those that are not familiar with the area. In proximity to where we live, I would say we have four, and it's, as the crow flies, it's not a direct, but as the crow flies, there's probably three of them within a mile to two-mile range. Reese Park is close to my heart, not only because of where we live, but an ancestor donated that to the county. And it's a pretty pristine place. We enjoy going there a lot, but the smell sometimes inhibits the enjoyment. We have a national historic building just a mile and a half down the road, the Honey Creek, New Providence Meeting House. I shouldn't say New Providence. It's the Honey Creek Meeting House. At any rate, we have been privileged to have a property outside of the state, in a more pristine place. When we come back, we are welcomed by the smell of Iowa. The last time we came back, I said to my husband, "Who would want to visit here?" You cross the border, and the smell just permeates everywhere. Granted, it is harvest time, it's the time to spread the manure, I get that. But I don't get why all these small communities, New Providence, 235, maybe 260, we are mandated to have a septic system in place that takes the waste and treats it. These hog buildings produce four times the amount, and they're, we're allowed to spread those openly over, over, over the ground. I don't get that. How is it that human waste has to be processed, animal waste does not? Mr. Havens did an excellent job of presenting just the effects of the phosphorus, and I appreciate all the hard work that you put into that. We are this close, and I know it doesn't matter to many of you, but we're this close to leaving the state of Iowa, just based on what's happening. Here in Hardin County, and it's not just Hardin County, it's the entire state. It makes me sad. I look forward to that time when our children would have children, and we could bring them to our place where we have a pond, we have a barn dance, and have for the last 27 years. All that's going to go away, and it won't matter to many of you. I understand that. I get it. And I'm speaking at an emotional level. I also drive a school bus for the school district, the declining enrollment. I travel, have to travel 13 miles to pick up my first student.
Wow.
And then I travel another 17 miles from there to pick up 13 or 14 in the town of New Providence. We are getting very, very spread out, and we can't get any further spread out by the mandates as far as transporting kids. But enrollments are declining. We got to get a grip, we got to take a look at why. Who wants to live here? What is there for us? I thank you for your time. I wish I would have been more prepared, but, and it is from an emotional level, but this issue has gotten to that point. And for what it's worth, I think we're pretty valuable parts of this county, but I don't want to live here anymore if it continues this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is Alex Staples.
My name is Alex Staples. I really wasn't planning on speaking today, I just came to listen. But in listening to everybody's speeches today, if you would have asked me years ago, I wanted to live here. I wanted to live where my parents raised me and raised my own family there. If you asked me today, I want to get out of state. There's, there's nothing here but the smell of hog manure fields. It's not somewhere that I want to raise my kids. I used to be able to ride my horse down the road without a worry, and now, I wouldn't even attempt that. The equipment is huge, and I have seen people being run off the road before. How is that safe? How many more people end up in the ditch before something changes? I've seen somebody riding on the road, on a horse, and they've had to jump down in the ditch to get by somebody, or to let somebody by them. And you're sitting on top of a 1,200-pound animal, you're putting yourself at risk just doing that, but then to add in factors like that, it's not safe. And that's a recreational thing in Hardin County. People have horses. Where are they supposed to ride them at? I've been living in Ames for school, and I've walked outside of my house in the middle of Ames, and I have smelled hog manure. And it just, it frustrates me. But like I said, I want to get out of Iowa. If you would have asked me that years ago, I would have said I wanted to stay. So how many more young people have to leave the state before something changes?
Yep.
Thank you. Last on my list is Wernie Martin.
Who?
Wernie Martin.
There were some more people that came later, but I don't think Martin might have left.
Okay, well, from there, does anybody else have comments?
My name is John Heitlin. I live in Iowa Falls. I'm not on the list because I wasn't planning to speak, but I was standing in the hallway talking to the lady who lives in the Twister House, and she asked me to share her story. Back when the movie was being filmed here, I was on the Hardin County Historic Preservation Commission, and we had a meeting where we were visited by a lady from the State Historic Preservation Commission, who basically said, "You guys aren't doing your job. We have a historic farmhouse that's going to be blown up for a movie." And we agreed she was right, so I wrote a letter to Steven Spielberg, the executive producer of Twister, at the care of Warner Brothers Studios. Never received a response, but a short time later, the ending of the movie was changed. The script called for the house to be blown up by a tornado. They changed the ending to the barn be blown up, we think because of our letter. So the point of that story is, even back then, the State Historic Preservation Commission recognized the historic value of the house in question, and I think we should also, you have a lot of applications that involve farmhouses where people live. Every farmhouse is important to its owners. This farmhouse is important to all of us as a local historic landmark, so please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I've heard it said by a former Republican representative that the smell of hog confinements...
Can you come up and speak, please?
I don't have that much to say. I'm Kathy Friesler. I live in Akron. This politician said that the smell of CAFOs was, to her, the smell of money. And that repulsed me, actually, because there's particulate matter in the air when you smell a smell that strong, and that's what causes the asthma and the respiratory problems. No, it's not the smell of money, not for Iowans. It's the smell of money for a few people.
That's right.
It does, it does offer employment, but as Brenda said, their health is at risk if they're working in the production lines. It's just something I wanted to add.
Thank you. Jacob?
Jacob Hansacker from Hardin County, over by Radcliffe. So we've kind of gone off the rails here of talking, I mean, we've covered a lot of different subjects, of the Twister site directly, and then a lot of people have been discussing hog confinements in general, so I'm going to go more to the general term. Every morning about 5:00 AM, my alarm goes off. I step out my door and walk 99 steps to the front door of my hog house. 1600 Head Hog House, 99... in favor of hog confinements in general, I'll put that out there, I'm in favor of agriculture. We need to look at what we're, as an overall generality here, are we supporting agriculture? Are we supporting the wise decision to make, to put and place hog buildings? Are we going to be against every hog building that comes out there? So, that hog building, we built that back in 1993. I was in junior high, I went out there, I helped every day with the construction crew pouring concrete, just because I was on the farm and I liked to work. Got to know a lot of, probably a lot of words I shouldn't have learned at that age. But, you know, the value of hard work, getting the job done, getting the buil-, building built, that also helped as I was going to college at Iowa State, half an hour from home. I was coming home, doing chore for my dad when he was able, when he wasn't, had something else going on, loading pigs at 3:00, 4:00 a.m., going back to class, that helped pay for my college. That also gave me the opportunity to come home to the family farm and continue and raise my, my grand, my children are sleeping in the same bedrooms that their great-great-grandfather and grandmother slept in. They built that house. So, before we go through and look for moratoriums, before we go through and say that there's, that hog confinements are the worst thing in the, in the state, that they're poisoning our water, they're poisoning our state, instead of broad, general statements that everything is bad and agriculture and hog, hog producers are out there to hurt, harm everyone out there, let's take a, let's take a closer look at what they can actually accomplish. Sometimes they're right, sometimes they're placed in less than ideal locations, but I encourage everyone, instead of painting everything with a broad brush, that you very closely look to the idea of what's going on, what the family can be, benefit from, and what the local community can benefit from. I'm also a local fire department member and one of two, one of three EMTs on our local ambulance. So, farming, hogs, agriculture keeps me around the family farm. The other, one of the other members on the ambulance is a hog producer as well, so, without us two, without hog production, our state, our town wouldn't have an ambulance, so. A lot of the members on our local fire department are that same way, so. I challenge you, and I promote to you to look at, look at things, look at things closely, and, and don't paint every producer, every agriculturalist in a bad light. Thanks.
Can I, can I ask a question? Are you, are you the owner as well as the operator, so that, that you are the ones who benefit?
For this particular site, we are. There are other sites that we've worked with, Iowa Select, there's an Iowa Select site, three-building site that is a quarter, three-quarters of a mile from our house, and we worked with Iowa Select and we were able to get the nutrients. Iowa Select built that site like they're building this site, but we, as the farmer, were able to get the nutrients. We have two sites with them, and then two sites with Murphy Brown that are the same way. We've done the, we get the nutrients, we get the benefit from the-
What are the nutrients?
The hog manure that we put on the field.
Okay, so you put it on your field?
We put it on the field, we do all of our own hauling and everything, and that benefits us by keeping our crop production prices low. Senator had, Representative had mentioned the 80s, and, and there's a lot of people that are bringing this current time in agriculture to, to like the 80s, with low crop prices, very small margins, and tough for a lot of people to get going, so. It's been brought up that young people are able to get involved with agriculture through hog confinements, and the correct placing of hog confinements and the nutrients that those add to the field and keep down the cost of production.
Well, obviously, I mean, not everybody is a local owner.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yep.
And I think that for myself, I can't speak for anybody else, but that absentee ownership is offensive.
Yes.
That absentee ownership, they should be living with the hog confinements the way you and your family are.
No, ma'am, ma'am. There's a chance to speak, if you'd like to come up, I'll let you speak.
I thought we had questions, I'm sorry.
You're making more of a statement than a question at this point.
So, do you own the hogs?
No, we do not. We contract grow.
But you do in fact live on the land?
99 steps away.
And who, who owns the hogs then?
Another integrator.
Another integrator?
Some, they own a larger amount of, they own the sow's, and then they custom, we custom feed for them, so we own the building, we get the profit from the building, we get the nutrients from the hog manure.
Is that owner then like the local co-op, or?
No, it's Tri Oak Foods, another company similar to Iowa Select. We have, we have worked with Iowa Select in the, on this barn in the past, it's just, as time changed, so do integrators, and, and we decided to go with that company.
I see. But you do live on the, on the land?
99 steps away. Yep.
And that's the difference.
Do you apply the newer importance with Iowa State University or PF 1688?
We have, we follow the new tree management plan.
Which does not follow Iowa State University PF 1688. I'll give you some specific information.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Before I move forward, I got to get back to where I was. The public hearing, have we had any written comments? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, I'll ask one more time if anybody else would like to speak. Hearing nobody else, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Next is item number seven, it was recommendation on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Twister Farm Endeavor Farms LLC 20, Section 24 of Eldora Township. We have not received the master matrix on this yet.
Can you speak up a little so I can hear you?
The next is a recommendation on the master matrix, item number seven, if you can see it on the board as well, but we have not gotten the master matrix yet. You might have it to us by next Wednesday, but I believe the following week is more-
Right.
You have the master matrix?
We have a-
You have that, we have the application.
And the master matrix?
The master matrix is what the assessor completes after he's done the measurements and all the other research.
So the developer can submit their own, but our assessor goes out and, and looks at each site and verifies and checks the scoring and does their own measurements.
And it was my understanding he's already told PM on his part?
He has not informed us of that in any means.
We have no paperwork, we were told that he has not completed it yet. And he's not here today.
Is this a county employee, this assessor?
It's the county assessor.
He's the county assessor, he's also zoning administrator.
It's an appointed position. He's the zoning administrator, and he's the one that completes them.
So this time, I have not received his recommendation of the master matrix.
Wait, wait, at, at other public hearings, I think you voted right away, I'll have to go back.
There are, there have been a few that we, we haven't been able to, that we've voted like the following week, so.
Oh, I guess I'll have to go back and look and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are, there are some, Julie, that we didn't-
So when would this one be voted on?
I'm not sure if it'll be next Wednesday's meeting. It sounded to me like he was going out there, meeting with the DNR at 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday of next week.
And the public is able to attend that too, so you can go with the DNR for the onsite visit? You might not be able to go on the property, but you can join up.
Okay.
Okay, which, from that letter I read, which of the three avenues of, does this Board of Supervisors take as far as dealing with master matrix and the DNR? I mean, do you do that certification?
Yes. We normally, we normally have done that at the, the first meeting of the year.
Okay, but after that, there are two levels of involvement. Which level are you guys at? Do you actually look at each individual one and analyze it yourself, and make a specific individual recommendation to the DNR, or you just kind of say, you, you guys decide down there? Which, which approach are we?
This is the approach we're at right now, where we look at it, we send our zoning administrator out, he does the, goes through the process, the review of the master matrix, he presents it to us, and then we make that decision.
Do you look at all the different point scoring and everything? You three?
We get, we get copies of them.
Yes, we get the copies of the submitted application.
And can I ask how many you have rejected?
Since I've been here, zero.
Me too. Zero.
Zero, zero.
I don't remember. Might be one in there, but I think it's zero.
Maybe zero. Zero, zero, zero. So, it doesn't appear to us that there's really much analyzing going on, especially when these speakers spoke up about all the, the different areas that had zero points, which were important areas for all of us. So if you're at zero, 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 it sounds like you're just passing it on to the DNR, and if you do that, they rubber stamp it.
So what happens is, Don Nell, our assessor, checks the application against what is in the application. Any discrepancies then have to be changed or have resolution made to those.
Well, we're kind of asking that you look at the categories that are important to Hardin County residents.
Right.
And if there are no points made in the important areas that we, we would like to see, I think you should question it, and maybe not just automatically pass it on.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, on item number seven, I don't have the master matrix, so I can't present, as you said.
So I would make motion to table number seven? Do we need to have a motion to do that?
I need a motion, yes.
So when?
We won't know until we get the Don's final numbers back.
Will there be adequate notice for the public?
It will be on the agenda that is put out on our website next Tuesday. It's the, the Tuesday by 10:00 in the morning that it has to be put on, so you can check next Tuesday at 10:00 to see if it's on next Wednesday's agenda, or check the following Tuesday.
So people will only have about 24 hours' notice then?
There's-
In this situation, because obviously there's a lot of people here, you might want them more than 24 hours.
Unless you'd like to have a meeting on Thursday or the following week, which is coming up.
And in the evening?
We are looking at canceling our meeting of the-
The 27th.
The 27th, but we could have it on that meeting and have a meeting that day.
That's, that's fine.
Or if Don's meeting with him on the 20th, which I'm going to verify, unless we hold it on the 21st. I don't, special meeting on the 21st. I don't, I'm available on the 27th, so it doesn't matter to me.
So you, the motion currently is to table, I have not gotten a second.
I'll second the tabling of the recommendation on animal feeding operation construction permit, Twister Finisher Farm Endeavor Farms LLC, Section 24, Eldora Township.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Would you guys like to have it on the 27th?
Why don't we just plan it for the 27th, so people know?
Okay.
Is that in the morning or in the evening, so people-
It'll-
It'll be a 10:00 meeting.
It's 10:00, that's our regular board meeting every week.
27th and 10th?
Yeah, the discussion.
Did you make your motion to amend that?
That was just a discussion.
Do you?
No.
Would you, would you like it amended, to be put in, so it is on the 27th?
We were, item number 10, we were going to examine the regular meeting, so we're still planning on having a meeting on the 27th until item 10, so I don't see any reason to.
What now?
We were planning on having a meeting on the 27th anyway.
No, we weren't.
Well, we haven't-
Organizational meeting.
Right, right.
Let's, let's get back into the discussion on this. Would you like it amended, or would you just like it to be in the discussion?
In the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries.
It'll be the 27th petition.
Let me get down the line a little bit, and then I can answer your question. Let me get down the line a little bit, so I can answer your question. There's another line item that we have to go through, and that'll answer your question once we get to that.
Mr. Chairman, may I just say something? It's unrelated to all this, but if I came all this way, and it has to be recorded count. May I? Just take me a minute.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a registered independent. I did some research to find out who the last one was in the Iowa Senate, and he came from here at Hardin County, William Schmedica. Do I have Schmedica right? Does anybody know, are they still around in the family? But I just, I thought that was interesting. He was a Democrat in the House, but when the Republican who held the Senate seat passed away at the beginning of his term, he changed to independent and was elected. So you had a Republican, a Democrat, an independent, all wrapped up in that old seat. I thought that was just really interesting. So, but it was here, he lived over by Radcliffe, and just, he was the last one to serve in the Iowa Senate.
Do you know what year that was?
Thank you.
1912, I'm sorry, 1923.
Oh, all right, no wonder.
Oh, yeah.
That's why you don't remember.
Well, I just didn't know if anybody here had any family ties. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that.
Next is line item number eight, which is Hardin County Employee Acceptable Usage Policy. Mica?
asking the Board of Supervisors to approve that outlays expectations and guidelines for using computer equipment, mobile devices, and social media, networking, et cetera, et cetera. This is a policy that we-
Do you need to use the mic? We're getting quite a bit of noise.
Right there's a microphone, I'm good. This is a policy that we will expect every employee to sign, to read and sign, we'll keep it as part of their records, and we'll work with the department heads for them to sign it. It's mostly common sense stuff about appropriate use of equipment. We have not had a policy that incorporates all that this one does before, so this just documents mostly what I've been verbally telling people, but now it's written down for their knowledge, for their reference, and so they know what the expectations are for being a Hardin County employee and using their equipment.
I will make a motion to approve the Hardin County Employee Acceptance Usage Policy 2017.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? One of the discussion items we've had brought up was how long we retain emails for, and I think we're still in the process of trying to find a good answer on that one.
Right, so, there's nothing in the Iowa code that requires you to retain emails as public records for any set amount of time, and a survey of IT professionals in other counties show that it varies greatly from not retaining anything to retaining it all forever, and everything in between, a couple months, five years, seven years. So, right now, this is, obviously, you have to, we've only had this system for six months, so we've got time to figure it out, and I'm looking for some documentation or recommendations from attorney, or somebody just kind of to give us some legs to stand on, on what we're going to keep our emails for. So right now, it says we're going to keep them permanently, but it's just a policy, we can change the policy once we have something that we feel comfortable kind of setting that up. And we wanted to make sure, more importantly, we also wanted, part of this policy is not only setting expectations, but reminding all of our employees that their computer usage is a public use, we are subject to open records meetings, and open records documents, et cetera, et cetera. And so we have some, especially new employees that are new to county government, that may not understand some of the rules that we fall under as county public employees. So, yeah, right now, we'll be keeping all emails, but we were looking at years as our minimum, so we've got like two and a half years to figure it out before we set that policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries. Next is item number nine, which is approval of 2017 new business property tax credit applications, taxes payable 2018 and 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017 new business property tax credit applications as provided.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Much carries. Next is a change of the regular meeting date of December 27th, 2017. This is a discussion that was brought up earlier. This is a discussion that was brought up earlier. It's looking like we'll have it as normal.
Yep.
We need to speak up.
So, I'll make a motion to keep the December 27, 2017 meeting at 10:00 a.m. as usual with no changes to time or location.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Is that in code development for the Twister site?
Yes. If the matrix scoring and everything has been submitted, then it will be on that day's agenda.
I also believe the deadline's two days after that or one or two days after that. I'm not sure on that. Be 100% positive, but it does fit within the timeframe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is the January organizational meeting, set time and date. The date is set for the second.
Yep. I'll make a motion to conduct the January organizational meeting on January 2nd, 9:00 a.m. in the large conference room at the Hardin County courthouse.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is accept, discuss, PPME Local 2003 Union's initial proposal. I believe that's coming in next week.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table the acceptance or the discussion of PPME Local 2003 Union's initial proposal to a date, to be determined later.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We're just waiting on the actual documents from the union before we can discuss those. So, not sure when those will be provided.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, I have is an application for fireworks permit, Jim Johnson family, Jay Weichel family.
I will make a motion to approve the Jim Johnson family, Jay Weichel family, application for fireworks permit. They have met all the requirements on the application form, so I would, motion to approve.
I'll second the motion to approve the fireworks permit.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? It's over the December 30th and 31st?
Correct.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is ineligible homestead military credits to be disallowed for 2017, payable 18 and 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the ineligible homestead and military credits for, to be disallowed for 2017, payable 2018, 19, as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the Recorder's Monthly Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Recorder's Monthly Report for the month of November.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Totaling $20,966.30. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits. Secondary Roads Department.
Do you want me to come and vote you while you got it?
Sure.
I think you feel special.
Whenever it takes.
I think, yeah, thank you. So, we're currently moving forward with two projects that have apparently been tabled for a while. One Tina and Jim know about. It's a drainage district over by Garn City. They dug it out a long time ago. They never did the road crossing, so I'm having Bruce move forward with that. Our other one, Ronnie Mullins, is here. He is with the plant of Blackleese. We're going to try to vacate that road for him and the other residents, so our survey's there.
Is that the road that goes south?
Yes, the south.
Kind of odd.
Yeah, right along the state right away for Highway 20. Yep.
When that happens, let us know.
Yes, so now that we have the survey done, we're going to go ahead and get back to you guys, Bruce, and two. Other than that, our bridge, we'll talk about that next.
Bob wants his bridge done.
Next avenue?
Which one? That, we're, that should be done this winter. They're going to do it, they call it an abutment rehab. Pretty much what they'll do is they'll put four piling down on each side of the bridge, slide a beam underneath and it buys it about 20 years, so it's not a complete replacement, but it will be...
So, I can get my bicycle across it?
Yeah, that'll be done.
I'd still prefer to have the dam.
Well, this, if you only buy 20 years instead of replacing it completely, we can still have that discussion, so...
In 20 years?
They'll still be around.
Or sooner. You got it. Yeah, thank you.
You got anything else for us?
Nope.
All right. Next item, consider proposal for bridge inspection and rating program.
Yep. Okay, this is an outside contract we do with Calhoun Burns Associates. We did the same thing at Wright County. They're a great company. I've seen what the ones that, what done by different companies look like and they aren't near as in-depth. Like, these ones have pictures, so that's really nice in my office. You know, somebody talks about bridge, like...
Oh, yeah.
14,412. I'm like, eh. So, you go, you look at the picture and, you know, they go under the bridge, take picture. It's a great company. You know, that's about the rates they use for everybody else.
Same as we've had before?
No, the rates went up. They go up.
No, I mean, same company?
Yes. Yep.
So, they take photos of the bridges and everything? Is that something that we want to make more publicly available? Like, with like a map, you could click on a bridge and see the pictures? Does anyone care? Is that something that would happen?
I don't know. I mean, they give us a DVD or I guess it's a CD with all the pictures.
Is that how they give it? Not bridges?
Yeah, so we have them digitally already.
Do you think there's public interest in that or are these more technical, where like they're really boring and no one's really going to care?
Yeah, some of, some of them are really boring, but you know...
They're something to think about.
Some pictures are pretty nice, you know, like if you've got like a timber abutment or a pylon, timber pylon, I mean, and you can see that it's hollow on the inside, you